Anyone speaking tonight, we have two public participations. One's agenda, which is item five, but then we have, that's only on the agenda items, but then we have general public participation later in the meeting. That is, I own. Oh, yes, it's item nine. Do we have an executive session today?
Yeah.
We'll have an executive session on our next meeting. That was the 19th?
You know what, I don't think, what kind of...
What are we doing in the executive session?
No, what are we doing in that?
Probably a lot of personnel items, April 8th, April 8th. And that's a, that's generally, it's, what I'm saying, legally, you have to do some non-renewals by that time if you want to do them. And you will have a motion I'm going to talk to you about tonight as far as, I think, as far as the construction project, there's nothing going on at that point.
We only had one change that week, right?
Yes.
If you have any questions, we're waiting for you.
And you know, I will... Just basically talk to you about the things we're going to talk about in the executive session.
You ready, sir?
I'm ready.
Well, man, are you ready, sir? You ready? I'd like to call the order of the meeting, special meeting of the Madison Local Board of Education for April 7, 2011. At this time, when everyone stands for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Zabel, roll call, please.
Jacklyn Asbough.
Here.
Jay Fabian.
Sir.
Michelle Hayes.
Here.
Rex Reiger.
Here.
Teresa Ward.
Here.
And at this time, everyone knows to drill now on your electronic devices. If you mute them or whatever takes the silence, I'm going to be appreciative, or at least library. We have students here for class. We have an agenda, and just get it signed by anyone at this table afterward. We'll set it. Okay, we have a motion for item four, approval of the agenda.
I think it's a suggestion, but I think we have two here for comments. If you want to move that part of public participation up, or open the first one. I think the only reason you're here is for that, unless you want to stay the whole meeting.
Whatever, I'm not entirely sure. How do you guys want it to be preferred to happen?
We'll get our public participation, we'll just make it general for everything.
Okay, I just wanted, because I'm saying, I think they're here to make a comment rather than sit through all of...
It's like your presence.
Huh? I just wanted to be around, you can...
You're more than welcome to stay.
Please don't...
Public participation on all items.
No, no problem, sure.
Having public participation. We have a move for approval of the agenda by Mrs. Azbell, second.
I'll second.
Mr. Zabel.
Teresa Ward.
Yes.
Rex Reiger.
Yes.
Michelle Hayes.
Yes.
Jay Fabian.
Yes.
Jacklyn Asbough.
Yes.
Vote is 5-0.
And at this time, we're moving into public participation. Please state your name and address, and then we address the board.
This is appropriate. Okay, sure. Tony Dor, Williston, 924 Hayes Avenue, teacher at Madison High School. And forgive me, I wrote everything out, so I don't try to ramble a whole lot, so...
That's appreciated.
I know your time is limited here. I'm here because basically, a number of teachers have expressed concerns and had questions about some of the financial decisions that people were made. It led us to financial... As a representative of NEA, I asked Board President Rex Reiger back in early March to set a meeting with the Board of Education and the NEA Precautions Chairs, and he responded by saying this would be the most appropriate venue to ask any questions or concerns that we would have. And so we're here basically to try and be able to answer any questions that teachers have in the district regarding some of those financial conditions. Our first question is, is that many have expressed concerns regarding the board's decision on January 6, 2011, to hire incoming treasurer, Michael, I apologize, Cherry Yellow?
Vekel.
I'm sorry, but Vekel. As a consulting financial officer, it was listed as a rate of $443.48 per day from what was listed as a period of February 7, 2011, to July 31, 2011. And it looks like that's a period of roughly 25 weeks of $5, uh, five days per week, which is approximately $55,000 is what we're looking at, close to $50,000. And obviously, after, you know, last summer, the teachers had agreed to take a 0% and even a potential 2.1% decrease because of the concessions of the, you know, school workshops, the high school workshops. Many teachers are kind of concerned about the board's beliefs as why we thought this was an important thing to do at a time when teachers are being prepared for potential layoffs.
Let me address two things quickly. One, it is against the law for us to meet in private with anyone as a board. So we have to meet. It's also, I think, if I met with you personally, I don't represent the entire board, it's just myself, and this is the only venue where all five of us can have input for his questions. So when I respond to his email, yes, we'd like to meet, but to do it properly and legally, this is the venue it has to be. Anyone can express their opinion or not opinion. And secondly, the decisions that the board makes, you know, we, and the board will have input, but believe me, it wasn't just an overnight snap of the fingers decision. So I hope you take that in mind, that there was a lot of forethought, and the board wants, the board has the option to progress and answer his questions, or not to speak at all. So just so the board knows where we're at.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Can you repeat your... Yeah, sure. Basically, you know, many teachers have asked why they would believe that such measures were necessary, like the five-month tenure, when, again, we're being told to prepare for potential layoffs.
I can tell you my perspective on that. I know that this was, you know, a heavy-pointing conversation that we had because of the, you know, looming financial debt, how, or deficit. However, we feel like, especially because of everything that's happening with the state of Ohio, and because we have the construction project going on, which we can't change the state to not hire a project manager to represent solely our interests and help process the paperwork and the order changes and all those sorts of things, we chose not to hire that person. We chose to put that basically on our superintendent, assistant superintendent, and treasury office. It brings with it a lot of work in the treasury office and handling local work. That's where the bulk of that responsibility lies. So we have that going on, and we are also looking at a lot of movement in Columbus with a lot of changes in financial outlook that impact our numbers significantly. We don't think that it's a really great time to have a learning curve in running the financial matters of the school district. We just don't think it's fiscally prudent or responsible to have one treasurer go out and another one come in in the middle of a construction project, in the middle of what we're facing financially. We needed a succession plan that's going to be responsible. Additionally, believe it or not, Mr. Zabel has accumulated a lot of vacation time. And will be golfing here when the weather breaks, and has shared with us he will be golfing when the weather breaks. We can't leave, and we can't tell him, no, you can't go golfing. We can't leave our, you know, our staff, that we have already taken major cuts in the central office staff, you know, to avoid cuts in the classroom. It is extremely mean. The people that you see sitting around this table, or not the board, those guys, are working tremendous numbers of hours, are under a tremendous amount of stress, working, doing more with less. So to put them in a position where, you know, we have this increase in activity and take a treasurer away part-time and not have a succession plan would compound the problems that we're facing as a district, and we just don't think it's responsible. I didn't think it was responsible. I won't speak for the board.
Can I say amen?
That's all I have. That's my entire opinion, it's all of it. Other people speak.
He has, he had enough vacation that he could literally walked out at that moment in time and not come back. Close. But, but the point is, is that he could, if, you know, if he wanted to. Okay, and not saying he's going to do that or anything like that, but if, yeah, there's somebody in there to get ready to go.
Anyone else, Michelle? Michael?
Since part of my job is to make sure that numbers are, that are given to the board and to the public are always accurate, while the daily rate approved on January 6 was $400 and some dollars, if you recall, either a month or two later, we had to revise that down to the actual number of my daily rate. So, while his calculation may be correct, that it's $50,000 for that period of time, it is actually much less because the daily rate that was originally approved was the daily rate used for severance or for some other calculation after computation of my annual salary.
Right. Thank you. Secondly, it's come to our attention that another administrator was recently approved by the board to retire and do rehire at 85% salary. While the board, the community, and teachers all agree in the value of rehiring a veteran employee at lower cost, some are wondering how much of a value the community is getting if our employees are still getting 85% of their previous salary. Teachers who are retired, who are rehired, excuse me, after retiring under the current contract language can be rehired at a salary as low as 59.71% of their previous salary, or up to a maximum of 72.86%, so about 13% less at the very top end of what the, what we're told the administration's coming back at. And that depends on the amount of salary, the amount of education that the teacher had had prior to retiring. So with that in mind, again, we're being asked questions of why the board is allowing administration to be rehired at 85% of their salary, especially when any salaries of administration is usually significantly higher than that of retiring teachers. And considering, again, the difficult financial times when teachers in force staff are, again, risking being laid off, and also when knowing that if we bring in an actual candidate for that position, we'd be saving even further money.
Just a couple of points of clarification to bear in mind. One is, it wasn't rehired by the board, it was rehired through the county. So you did that, you rehired. So that's a point to clarify. And the other is, at a per diem rate, that administrator doesn't make more than the teachers make much less. And as you all know, administrators are in much longer contract.
Okay, I understand the per diem rate.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're saying... If you want to work the same, if you're saying you're willing to work the same number of days as the high school principal, we'll take that deal.
But we're looking at overall salary, again, we're here presenting questions to be asked.
If you work the same number of days as the principal does, it'd be something we'd probably be looking at, but, but you work, again, a lot fewer days than the high school principal does. So you have to compare apples to apples, you have to look at per diem.
So are all retired, rehired administration coming back as county employees then?
Not all, at this point in time, the reason we're doing that, and I gladly share that with you, is, as you know, maybe you don't know, we have a building project going on where we're restructuring the district. And this will allow us greater flexibility in that reorganization of the district.
By taking some administration through the county?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a short-term contract, we don't have to get into long-term contracts, and it'll allow us greater flexibility.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I'm sorry. Am I correctly, it is roughly 85% of the...
Yes, yes. Very correct.
All right.
Mine is the health insurance and the retirement.
Is there, is there a reason that we don't try to bring them back at a lower percentage still, knowing that, again, I mean...
Well, as you well know, and we're going to be looking at everything at a lower percentage here, we're looking at a lot of different things right now. I suppose there's all kinds of rationales to doing a lot of things, but we're, when we're looking at one person versus 300 and some people, the savings on that one person is much less than looking at the 300 and some people.
Okay. I definitely, 85% is still less.
And I'm sorry...
85% is still less than 100%.
Correct. Well, like I said, I mean, teachers have come back, they're coming back at roughly 60 to 73%, and that's why I just, we were...
Teachers, that's a negotiated agreement.
Right.
Teachers are...
I'm just saying that... All right. Thirdly, many teachers were disappointed to learn, after being told last May that the board did not intend to fill the position for assistant superintendent for the upcoming year, that the board later agreed on, what looks like the August 11th, to change Mrs. Smith's contract from curriculum director to assistant superintendent, which includes a full SRS pickup by the board. And this is a matter, again, that we had tried to reach out earlier, and Mr. Reiger, you spoke to already, that basically, that was not the appropriate forum, that this is the appropriate forum, which is why we're bringing it now. So the question essentially is, why did the board change its mind and decide to fill that assistant superintendent position, especially as they did bring about additional costs to the board because of the SRS pickup?
I can answer that if you'd like. You must. Oh, okay. A lot of reasons. One is, this allows for, God forbid something happens to me, we have succession plan in place now because she has her superintendent's license. And the other thing it does is, we, it's one of those promotions that'd be like me saying, okay, instead of teaching four classes, you're going to teach these four classes plus four more classes, but you're going to make the same amount of salary. So that's kind of what we did with Angela in this case, is she was the curriculum person, the assistant superintendent left. All those responsibilities now, because we did downsize the central office from the assistant superintendent's position to the community relations position, to the two secretarial positions that we lost, were all consolidated onto basically, you're looking at central office here, you're looking at Angela now. So, so we consolidated all those positions. So I thought it was very appropriate, and I stand by that, that we give her the title of assistant superintendent, because it's not like we got 42 directors here, we have Angela now.
And from my perspective, it was a situation where, you know, I don't look at, did we fill this position, did we not fill this position? I look at the number of positions we have versus the number of positions we're filling. We didn't fill her with the assistant superintendent and then hire someone as a curriculum director. We just chose to slide her over, and we no longer have a curriculum director, she's still doing the work. So it's not like we filled an empty position and brought, brought in another body here. You know, it came down to the point, she was doing the job, she was doing more, she's doing right now more than typically an assistant superintendent would do. And we didn't have the money to give her a raise, and we felt, we felt the least we could do is give her the respect of the title that she has earned and deserves for doing the work. It was the least that we could give her, you know, in a tough financial time.
Well, I appreciate the rational explanation. I guess the question that some people are asking is that we were originally told that that wasn't going to be a position, that it was going to be a cut, that a position that wasn't going to be filled?
We would cut a central office position, which we did. We cut curriculum position.
Okay. I guess there was some misunderstanding that I had.
Okay, no, you don't have to apologize, I'm just saying, there was a cut.
Okay.
But we don't have, we didn't fill her position, we slid her over.
As we understood, it was a matter of cutting the assistant superintendent position because Dr. Shanty had been leaving, vacating that position, and we weren't going to refill that position particularly, that's what the question was.
That's fair, that's a misunderstanding. One additional thing, and this is because of my history, is that we are actually down, we're down one additional assistant superintendent from when I came on the board, on top of that, okay? So there, there used to be two assistant superintendents and a curriculum director and the superintendent at one point, and now we're down just the two instead of four. So that was a long time ago, that was when Larry and Lloyd Foxer here and...
Bob Leach.
Bob Leach. So we're getting thinner and thinner and thinner.
On that note, and I'm glad, it's part of, you're welcome to stay tonight, because one of the things that I've talked before about is we're going through a performance audit, and I requested a performance audit two years ago when we were at a $3 million deficit, because I said, boy, it just, to me, we're lean already and we're cutting. Well, I'll tell you, one of the things in conversations I already had with some of these auditors, as a matter of fact, we're getting these performance audits, it's an $8,000 service, but they're getting them for free, because we requested it and we're, we seem to be battling and keeping our head above water. But one of the things I can assure you from the conversations I've had already, is they certainly don't look at our central office as being overstaffed. And these are people that are comparing us to light districts around the state of Ohio, and I don't think they see that an area as where we're going to have an area to be able to cut. So it'll, it'll impact the entire district, or they're looking at all the departments, they're looking at the teaching and learning, they're looking at the transportation, they're looking at the, looking at everything. And they're going to come back with an objective point of view and tell the board, this is what we found.
You know, to be fair, though, I don't think that there really was a misunderstanding, but we told people that we were not going to fill that position. And so obviously, the board at a later date discussed it further and decided to fill that position, but I don't believe there was a misunderstanding. We did indeed tell people that we were not going to fill that position.
And that's fair. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, we, we, I just have one position less in central office.
Right, I just don't think that maybe they were connecting the fact that we've put, we gave Angela the title, but then we didn't fill Angela's position, so it's just...
No, I think that was understood, I, I...
You know, that I'm not sure that I'm following...
We're actually two people less in central office, because, of course, that position and the relationship, except...
Right? Thank you. Wasn't Betsy Myers is there?
And that's another position we're less. No, it is.
It is.
I, I'm telling you, we're, I feel very comfortable that we will not, they will not find us overstaffed in central office, I'll say that.
One comment I would make is, just to clarify, on the assistant superintendent position, my personal opinion was that if Dr. Gotti was out of the area or whatnot, we legally need to have someone in charge of our school system, and so that was my rationale. But for all those, for Tony and Chris, please remember, this board is, we take these decisions through the recommendation of Dr. Gotti, and they're not just things that we just rubber stamp and move on. In terms of fiscal responsibility, I can vouch, that this board looks at everything from a lot of different angles, and there's not many things that are overlooked to the penny, and I will compliment this board, that we, we're over this with a fine-tooth comb, there's a lot of give and take, sometimes a little emotion involved with the give and take, that, you know, this is, we have to look at this, we have to look at this, and it gets a little meticulous at times, but I compliment the board on that. We really look at things that you brought up in 10 minutes, that we've maybe spent months and weeks in talking and digesting. A case in point would be just some of the things that we do in construction right now. We actually have a meeting to, for the presentation, and then we have a meeting later for presentation and questions and discussion, and then we have a follow-up meeting for more questions and discussions, so that we don't jump into anything when we spend this amount of money. And it may look like it's a lot of board meetings, but in some instances, I think even the board says this is a lot of meetings, but we're doing this to be thorough. And I would say this board is as thorough as any board in the area, believe me, in terms of finances, in terms of personnel decisions. We follow the recommendations of Dr. Gotti, and he is the person that we hired with the treasurer, and it's just something that we feel as a board, that we make our decisions based on thought, and then we are elected to make decisions not only for the educational side, but also for the community side, that we have to make sure that we're doing the best for both sides. To say that, and I just look at your questions a little bit, and with the fact that it seems like we just jumped into it, and I don't resent it, I guess I do resent a little bit of the fact that there was a lot of forethought into this, and I hope you reflect that back to the membership, that this just wasn't done overnight, or on a whim, or because we wanted to do this or that. We thought it up with a lot of detail and a lot of, I think, hot debate sometimes, and we came with a decision that this is what we're going to do. And a lot of it is that we hire two people, they make the recommendations for our system, we set policy and direction, and we usually take their decisions and follow up on it. And that's my two cents, Chris.
I have one additional comment if I could. You know, we're, as you guys well know, we're coming into some really rough times, and, you know, we need to be a team, cohesively, trying to work gradually to solve these problems. And it would be really wonderful if we had some NEA and OCS members sitting in this room, where we're sitting around this table making these tough decisions on our own. You know, Angela and Roger do a great job of going out and trying to meet teachers and trying to get their perspectives, but it would be really nice if teachers are really concerned, as they should be, they have a right to be, and I'm glad that they are, I'm glad they're paying attention. I understand that it's, it's an extra meeting, and they go to work all day, most of us go to work all day too, and it's, it's an extra meeting for us, and we don't get paid nearly what teachers get paid to do this. It would be really wonderful if some of those teachers that have these really strong opinions, if they could come and sit and listen to our discussions, and we have open dialogue sessions, talk with us about it and give us the perspective, that would be, you know, from my perspective, you know, it would be really beneficial. I would certainly benefit from that. And I would encourage you, and I would encourage your union membership, to please start doing that, maybe have a rotation. If, you know, teachers can't make it every month, have a rotation where they come once a quarter. You know, not necessarily to the board meetings, but to the work sessions, if we know.
But, but sure, but short of, keep in mind the law governing collective bargaining and...
Certainly, I'm not, I'm not talking about contractors, but...
No, I'm just saying, but I'm just, keep in mind, we're going into that right now.
Certainly.
So we can't, we can't, as they know...
We can't have a dialogue.
Yeah.
No, but we, but you guys, your membership, it certainly has a very solid understanding of why we chose, you know, the contract with the new treasurer, and how some of these, you know, decisions come about. Instead of, instead of sitting, you know, in a vacuum and saying, why are they doing this, why are they, it's not, it's not they and us, it's a we. And I don't know how we can be a we if only this side of the table was here.
Totally. We're going to be announcing later a forum on, what was the date, April 27, a community forum on finance, and we welcome the teachers' participation, but we wanted to bounce it off the board tonight to see if you're available on that date. We talked about it today with the parent group, and we want to get together, we want to have their input, and, you know, there's, there's a notion, Jacklyn and I agree, there's a notion out there that it becomes the board's problem, or the superintendent's problem, or the treasurer's problem. It's all of our problems. I mean, it's collectively all of our problems. The finances of the district, no one person's going to solve the problem. So when we have these opportunities, I welcome them taking advantage of those opportunities. But, you know, in some things, we're still under the same laws that we've always been under. When we enter into collective bargaining, we can't do what's called direct negotiation.
I'm not, I'm not...
No, I'm just saying, I just wanted, they have to understand that, too. I mean, you know, I think when we actually start talking about, you can't sit there and ask us questions, well, why are you doing this, and we have to answer you back and stuff, then that's public negotiations, you can't do that. So understanding the rules, that we all are, our hands are tied, you know, in so many ways like that, at least the rules as we know them today. Is that right?
Couldn't they at least come and listen so they know?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
I think that's what she's saying.
Yes.
They can at least sit and listen so they don't hear rumors.
That'd be good, huh?
I know. First of all, I want to say I don't mind your questions at all. I mean, you should come and have, you have questions, they're good questions, and you should feel comfortable coming and asking them. And as far as the teachers coming to meetings and things, there is public participation, whether it's a teacher, it's a community member, they can always stand, and I hope that they feel free, comfortable, and free to do so, that they can stand and make whatever comment that they want. We may not be able to respond to that comment, but at least at that point, we do understand...
You do pay attention.
Absolutely. And, yeah.
One thing I would like to conclude probably is that, on this year's plate, we have, first of all, our building project. Secondly, we have a budget to work with, that's, with Columbus, has a lot of new directors that we're trying to wrap our heads around. And then, of course, we have negotiations with two contracts, so our plates are filled for this next few months, so...
Well, but first of all, education kids, we're trying to squeeze that in.
And that was my last point. On top of that, we have the daily educational process that we have to keep...
Well, we have all these other things, but let's keep the focus of the world...
So those two things are on top of what we normally do.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, I would agree.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Any other questions?
Any other public participation? All right, we're moving on to item six, board discussion. I guess Dr. Gotti would like to lead the way on these items.
The first one is on our construction project. And you want to pass yours out, or pass mine? Well, we both think that's the same thing. This is something, there's two resolutions that the construction manager and the, what's his name, Pomostos, I think it is, I think he was on this too, is what they, in order to keep, in order to keep the project moving, and actually, they wanted to have two resolutions on tonight's agenda for you, and I told them I wouldn't put this one on because we'd never discussed it, and I wasn't going to bring it to you without having a prior discussion. So we didn't put this one on tonight, but there's no rush on it anyway until we actually start...
This one that you've given us.
Yes, yes. This is for future consideration, but I want you to at least look at it first and see what you feel about it, because ultimately, what it basically says in layman's terms is that Mike and I agreed to a change order of up to $25,000 that can keep the project moving. And it's more of a strategic thing than it is a thing of us going out and spending 25 extra thousand if something, if they're putting a wall up and there's something that needs to be approved, they either get the approval or we go to the next board meeting. This is similar to like when we hire a teacher prior to a board meeting. When it comes to the board meeting, you say, no, we shouldn't have done it, then we figure out another way to cover it, but this allows the project to keep moving. And I'm not asking you to act on it tonight, I'm just, I just wanted to share it to you because they, they asked us to bring it to the board. It's common, they do it in all the other projects. Mike, what, you speak on it?
Yeah, what it allows you to do is keep the project moving. A $25,000 change order is not going to change the design of the building, but what it's going to do is, is once you break ground and start actually getting into building, the building, things don't always go as planned, and this allows us to keep on schedule. The change order will come back to the board for full approval because it is a change to whatever contract is in place at that time. This just allows... This just allows us to keep the, keep it moving. Doesn't mean every change order coming to us, Roger and I are going to approve.
Correct.
They're going to have to prove to us that the dollar amounts right and the work is needed before we'll sign it. But that would be the same thing as if we brought it to the board. Nor would I expect 50 of these change orders to be $25,000.
It just gives you up to that limit. But theoretically, what could happen, it could cost you more because if you have a bunch of bricklayers going up the wall and there's all kinds of stuff that goes in a wall of a building, from conduits to pipes to everything else, if something wasn't designed in there and they start up the wall and they say, oops, they didn't have this on the print or something, they either stop the bricklayers or you say, we'll agree to pay, it's not going to be $25,000 in that case, we're talking about a piece of conduit, we're talking small time, but it just keeps the project moving. So again, not for approval tonight.
What do you want us to?
Well, I'd probably bring it to the next board meeting and unless somebody has objection and wants more information, I'll bring you more information.
If you have more questions, call Dr. Gotti.
Sure. Okay. Item B, groundbreaking, June 6th at 6 o'clock. We finally kind of, you know, at our last core construction meeting said, you know, we've got to pick a date where we start getting people planned because we want to be able to invite elected officials, we want to be able to invite the governor on down, you know, God love or hate him, I think it's appropriate since we're partners with the OSFC. So we kind of looked at schedules on there and we try to stay away from graduation. Toward the end, you get into May and it's just crazy, but then you get into June, it's still crazy. So this is like the first Monday, yeah, first Monday in June at 6 o'clock. We kind of did a straw poll this morning of our parent group that we met with and said, you know, they thought that date would work for them. Matter of fact, they've offered to pay for any like punch or cookies or anything when a lot of people think we're spending money and they've offered to kind of, you know, provide services and things. They're going to work with us with developing a program of how we do, you know.
We've got local government officials.
We're going to invite everybody that, you know, we, we'll give you all the logistics of that and how we're doing it, but we just want to try to nail down a date because until we have a date, it's hard to even invite anybody. And so, is that a problem with anybody? It's the Monday after graduation and the parents this morning seem to think Monday is better than a weekend. Friday, the Friday, Saturday and Sunday, they said was bad. They said pick a weeknight. We picked Monday.
Okay.
Good?
Okay, will you tell our AB department?
All right, we'll move ahead, we'll move ahead with that date. June 6th at 6 o'clock, we'll put it on our.
Where's this going to be at?
Right, at the site.
Right on the middle side.
At where the Newville School will be. So, I guess what that would.
West of the football field.
In fact, that would continue to see plenty of rain because I was walking around in the slop out there the other day and that's not fun. Existing nursery inventory. Michelle asked the question and I believe it was at the last meeting about what we're going to do with that. We technically, as of April 1st, they have to be off the property, but since we're delayed a little bit because of the negotiations we had to do to get some of these things settled, we're probably, probably not going to disturb the soil till, at the very least, June, 1st of June. Because of that, I told the guy, not going to enter into any legal agreements with you. If you have guys taking stuff out up until the 15th of April, God love you, I'm not going to say anything. After the 15th of April, it's fair game. So, here's kind of what I'd like to suggest. We don't like the idea, tell me you don't like the idea. I'd like to suggest that after April 15th, we have Pat and our maintenance guys go over there and take out anything they want for the district, other buildings. Now, I don't know how much shrubbery or stuff we even need, but take out or tag anything they want. And then, I was going to ask some of the bigger greenhouse owners in the area, greenhouse owners, nursery owners in the area, Bob Lyon who's next door and Unger and, oh, I'm sorry, Jeff Hearn and anybody else that you think of that you want to let me know, I'll invite them over and say, look at it and say, do you want to buy any of this stuff for, you know, pennies on, is any of this stuff worth anything?
And Dr. Gotti explained that some of the nursery stuff is so big that for a person to.
When we were over there walking the land, we happened to have a guy stop by, you know, there's the management and then there's the people that do the day-to-day work. The guy that kind of manages the fields came by in his pickup truck because he was looking at what stuff needed to be moved stuff. And I asked him, I said, what are your plans for this? And he basically said, he said, you know, right now is just a bad time for this stuff because there's a glut of this stuff on the market. And we could dig it up, we can move it to one of our locations, but then we're going to stand there and watch it die. Because I didn't realize a lot of the stuff that comes out of these nurseries in Madison really are designed to go to new construction. Well, we all know a lot of new construction going right now. So, there's just not a market out there for this stuff. So if this guy that is renting the property from us now had a market to sell it, he'd sell it. He can't sell it because there's such a glut of this stuff on the market. So I thought, to be fair, we could at least offer it to some of the other nursery owners in Madison and then if they don't have a use for it for a cent on a dollar or whatever, then, then we could open it up for a day or two to residents that want to come in and at their own risk, at their own risk and take, but, but, see, what people don't understand is like some of these trees are so developed there that the nursery owners don't want them, they're too big to move. The cost in moving them are more than it would, because you can't take around, the width of the branches is how big a ball you need to take on some of these things. Some of these things have grown so big that they really become useless to people and if you just chop off the roots and take them, it's just going to die when you plant it in your yard. So if the board was willing to do so, we could just open it up for four hours on a Saturday and Sunday and have people at their own risk, have them sign a paper, say, at your own risk, dig up what you'd like on this property and then we'll skin it clean.
Yeah, I like all of that with the exception of after Pat goes over there, before we let the nursery guys come and have their, first of all, we're selling to the nursery guys, not giving to the nursery guys.
I said, I said cents on a dollar, I'd ask them what, what they'd be willing to give for. If they, if they didn't want to give us, well, and I don't know, I, Michelle, that's out of my ability. So if they said 10 cents, I don't know if that, what, those things are even worth when they really normally buy them. So whatever we could get, we would get.
Yeah, if we're just going to give it away, I'd rather open it up to the community, not to somebody else who's going to make a profit off of it. The other thing is, after Pat goes over there and gets what we want, prior to opening up to these nursery guys, I think maybe we should offer it up to the township and to the village as well because of the different parks and, you know, beautification around Madison.
That's a good idea. We could add that step, we could add that step in there. My biggest concern is that I don't want to delay the project. So I want to make sure we have Pat in, the township and the village in, then the nursery guys in and then the public and then cut it off because after that, we're going to start.
Start moving the dirt.
Yeah. Okay. So we'll come up with a schedule to, if the board's okay with that, I'm just suggesting if that's okay. If there's any objections, you know, kind of let me know.
I'll watch Mr. Britton with the shovel anytime.
Yeah.
You'll be leading all the others?
I like it and I think also like when we do get to the point where we're opening up to the community, we need to make sure that we really, you know, put it in the paper and advertise it, get it put out in front of the signs so that the entire community knows about it and nobody can say, hey, I've never heard about that, nothing.
We can do that. When we, when we get the official dates, Angela, you make sure I remember it.
They recommended that we have a dry day because, leave me, I was just out there.
And we don't want a lot of cars to drive back in there because it's, I mean.
We've got a lot of rain lately.
It's so, like, it's just not, not safe. So I don't want to put anybody in danger. Okay. Good, move on. 2011-12 calendar review, I think we're.
We're in process. We have tentative start dates, end dates, but one of the things that genie stuff needs to do so well and, you know, we're still in transition, was getting the conference dates coordinated with the principals and all of those things. So you'll have a draft in soup notes to look at tomorrow because today was one of those days we didn't get that done, was on the task list and with a couple of interruptions, we weren't able to get that part done. So you'll have a draft in soup notes and we will have it on the agenda for already April 19th meeting.
Now, can you tell me, I know that when we get a draft, it's not finalized, so we don't typically like to share it with most of the people because things could change. What is, I have eight requests right now of when is spring break?
Spring break will be a traditional spring break.
Easter's early, make sure you're safe.
Easter's early, we aren't going to do anything as far as trying to standardize. One of the things that we've talked about is looking at the county to standardize and that hasn't happened yet, so it's traditional spring break, Good Fridays, April 6th with the Easter week, so 6th through the 13th.
Okay, that won't change, so it's safe to share that because it won't change?
Right, that will not change.
Okay.
Where are you shooting?
The next June.
Right, no, I just, I have eight people who have contacted me, contacted me wanting either to know the first day of school or spring break.
And the first day of school right now, we're looking at a start date, it's pretty consistent with Riverside, I looked at their calendar. Auburn, I think, starts a couple of days ahead, but the student day, first student day would be the 24th and the teacher work day would be the 24th.
Doesn't really have to do with the calendar, but before I forget, are we, what are we doing about makeup days?
We are waiting to get the direction from OSBA or BASSA as what the recent, as of yesterday's legislation passed. In the final draft of House Bill 18, I believe, because there's so much legislation, I can't keep it all straight, in the final draft, they removed the backpack legislation because the Democrats wouldn't approve it with that in there, which meant you could make it up via online courses. But they kept in there, if you have more than the minimum day, that you could do that. We're waiting to see what they, in the regs, what they mean by that because if we do go beyond the minimum day, if that's the case, is when it comes out in regulations, then we may not have to make up anything. We may, but we're waiting, we should have, it just literally, got the email this morning, it passed yesterday, then, yeah, so it just literally finally passed yesterday. So once we get the regs on it, we'll get some.
How many days have we been so long?
Well, we're two beyond, we're at seven. And so we would need, if the hours to days thing works, we may need none. If it doesn't, we'd have to do two. So we'll know, we'll know by the middle of next week, okay? Good question. Let me add something because Gary reminded me in our parents' meetings, we had a great parents' meetings one, by the way. One of the things they brought up and I said I would share with you tonight and I had to put it on the agenda, is that they feel strongly, the leadership of the different parent organizations, that we should come up with names for the northern and southern elementary prior to them opening. And I said, I don't have a problem with that, just I want to answer out the board first because they think, they think, and I, and this, I think is a good argument, when you call one north and one south, it adds to divisiveness, it adds to kind of, you know, us and them. They want it to be we, as you suggested earlier, as opposed to us and them. Morden hates.
Works for me.
As, we could, you know, do this a lot of different ways. We could seek community input, we could seek input from the kids, we could get like a list of things and then you narrow it down to a list and they have a vote, but if you're not interested in doing that, then we're wasting our time. So if you would like us to pursue this a little bit, then we can kind of, you know, get a group together to come up with a way, a process by which we could come up with names.
I think you have to include a lot of groups.
Oh, I do too.
Just garden society, parents groups.
I do too.
Community members.
I do too. But, but we, in this, we have time because, you know, we haven't started building the building yet, so, but we'll start down that road only if the board wants us to.
Well, and not only, not only names, but mascots because you've got the red bird, you've got the Viking, what is North Madison? A bee, a bee, that's right.
Best runner was lightning and thunder, would become blue streaks.
You don't want to displace anyone.
I thought that was a heck of an idea, really. Lightning and thunder.
Who came up with that idea?
It was one of our parents. Somebody said, name one lightning, one thunder and they become blue streaks.
Yeah, but then you have that whole thing about thunder becomes before lightning.
Oh, okay.
A little competition.
But, no, I, I, we need lightning. So we could come up with a process by which to get input and to come up with this if you so desire.
Use our website too.
Sure. So we'll, we'll come up with a process and we'll try to. And, you know, and it kind of, really, the more I thought about it today, and that's why I'm surprised we have to put it on the agenda, is because it's really not going to be a true line down the middle, east and west, dividing the chip, it's going to be a more, yeah, and so it makes more sense not to call them north and south because it makes more sense to call them two different names because that line doesn't necessarily have to go right down around 20.
But they need an identity.
Yeah. And they wanted to do it before they went into, eh, makes sense. So, okay, we'll go ahead with.
Maybe use one of our holidays, like old fashioned days, what to announce for someplace like that.
That would be a good thing.
A lot of people there.
Don't you, don't you guys have enough on your plate?
We've got a lot on our plate, yeah.
Why don't we, why don't we leave it to the parents' organization to head that up?
We can do that. We said we would bring it back to our next meeting, actually.
Let them run with it, let them come up with it, you know, of course, we have to.
All I said is we were going to develop a process.
I didn't say we were going to. But you guys got enough on your plate.
I would agree with that.
Well, here's, here's the idea, you know, we, we have a loose old fashioned days and we struggle to find things to do that are going to attract people to our old fashioned days because it's kind of boring. You know, I mean, I can use a lens on people's faces for a while, but that, you know, that only amuses people for so long. So, you know, we could do something, you know, with our old fashioned days booth that drew traffic, that allowed them to come and contribute their ideas and that sort of thing and that, you know, almost the Star of Madison goes old fashioned days. On some point, it's probably the biggest, you know, the biggest event, you know, in town, so I would say, you know.
No, I think it's a great idea.
Throw it to the parents and let's use our.
Well, and I got to tell you, the parents group have been very supportive of all of this and they've met independent of us, they've met with us and their, the parent groups are trying to develop somewhat of a similar identity because we have so many different names, PTA, PAC, P, I can't remember all that, a bunch of accident names, every building's a different anter now.
Other people.
Yeah, so they're working on how the logistics of all that works, so we're working on that behind the scenes too. Okay. Performance audit. And just so you know, I mentioned it earlier, these are folks.
I'll just email them.
These are folks independent of us and we're forced to set like a 90 to 100,000 dollar audit that they're performing on us and it's going to take probably about six months. And this isn't an audit like when they come in and audit the treasurer's office. An audit when they come in to audit the treasurer's office is procedural, right? Just are you following procedures and protocol of a county?
And policies.
And policies. This is an audit of the various areas and it, this actually talks about a lot of the preliminary planning, the field work. They do cities, they do villages, they do it and they compare you to like districts in Lake, Asheville or around the state. I believe they're going to compare us with what, eight different districts? Eight different districts and they're going to say, in these eight districts, what does the student teacher make sure? In these eight districts, what is, how many special teachers do they have? In these eight districts, first square foot, how many custodians do they have? In these eight districts, how many central office people do they have? They're going to compare all, all aspects of our organization and look at it from an objective point of view and they're going to talk to board members, they're going to talk to administration, they're going to talk to teacher, they're going to talk to everybody in the district and they're going to come back with a formalized report for you. It's a third party look at us. So, whatever they come up with, I mean, I tell them they come up with some good ideas.
It takes quite a bit of time, right? It's not just the.
Well, it's six months.
Six months, right.
Six months minimum, I think, is what you said, right?
Riverside went through the process late 2006, issued in early 2007, so if you're interested, go to the state auditor's website, search for audits, check the Riverside, they'll[1745.83] see, type in Paynesville Township, because it was filed for that, um, it is much different than a financial audit, financial auditors are here two, three, four weeks, and you pretty much know what to expect, here they will dig into everything, they'll look at how you're spending money, how you can spend money better, how you purchase, how you transport, how you clean your buildings, how many people clean your buildings, it is very time consuming, cumbersome, what a great process to go through as a district, um, I told them I wasn't happy when I heard we were doing it, but thankful that they are, because I'll learn this district now in six months instead of six years, much better, what I'm doing in the district, what we're doing as a district, good process to go through, I'm not sure what they're going to find, this district is real, really.
Well, and, and it gives, it gives, for the community, it gives a third party look that has no affiliation with us, they don't work for you, they don't work for me, they work for the state auditor, so it's an objective look. Are, are these people from the state auditor's, or they're hired by the state auditor's office?
They're, they're state auditors.
Oh, okay.
Assigned to the performance audit division, they're not ones that go out and do financial audits.
Right.
This is what they do for the state auditor's office, um, the guy who's leading this project was the same one that did Riverside, some familiar with the style and-
Oh, really? I didn't know.
Yeah, we know, it's the same guy.
Okay.
And I'll tell you, we may not agree with their findings, you know, we'll get, actually, Roger will be the one who gets to, at the end, have a reply on behalf of the district, uh, it may be, you did a great job, we agree with everything, it may be, you know, we're not sure how to do this, but it's a really good process to go through, and the best part is it's pretty much that.
Well, and it, it simply amazes me, because I asked for this last year, and, and, because, you know, because they said to me the last year that, um, unless you're in fiscal caution or emergency, caution or watch?
Watch.
Watch or emergency, first fiscal watch or emergency that you have to pay for it, and I said, no, we, we, we're not going to pay for it, we want the audit, if you do it for free, well, just, all of a sudden, they had a change of heart and said, we'll do it, so.
Awesome, do, do our building principals and teachers and, I mean, is everyone in our district aware that we're doing, it's a great service, and I would think that-
They just started, that's a good thing, we could send out an email.
Let everyone know that they see strange people walking around their building, asking them questions, they might want to heads up, so.
No, we can, uh, we can send out an email, just after letting them know we're going to go through a performance audit and that, a little bit about what it is, good, okay.
Just a word of caution, along the way, this process is not a public process, um, in any meeting that the board has with the performance auditors, prior to the final report being released are not public meetings, they're audits and progress meetings and what are not public, now, the stuff we're given was all pretty much public record, but their findings and their conversations back and forth are not, good point, public records.
It's just like the-
Until it's released.
Okay, it's just like the regular financial audit, you have a meeting or could attend a meeting with them, which is not a public meeting, and until they actually release the audit.
So we can find the Paynesville Township results online, is that true?
Yeah, or, you know what, I can just email you.
Probably on Mary Taylor's, or is Mary Taylor in, or is it?
No, it's the-
At least send us the link to it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll email the link if I don't have-
Was rebuttal on there, too, that was my other question?
Yeah, the one page.
Okay, I just wanted, I'd like to hear what happened on that.
I, I will just email it to the board, too.
Good, good.
Could Riverside follow any of their recommendations?
A lot of them, yeah, and it was, uh, yeah, the good thing about it taking six months, they may come up with something in the first month and we look at and say, there's no reason to wait for the audit, that's a great idea, let's do it, so there was a lot of that type of, that's a great idea, let's do that, then there was stuff that took a little more planning, and honestly, there was a couple of things that we looked at and said, how do you do this, how do you, and the one that comes to mind is they want us to put thirteen custodians in at Riverside, how do you do it, keep a building open from six in the morning until midnight, an elementary building, with one staff person and no overtime, they couldn't answer, so when you look at the rebuttal from, from Dr. Scho, rebuttal, the response from Dr. Scho that was, great idea, great idea, we still can't figure out how you remove the custodians, so, you know, you, you're going to end the process, you might not always agree, but they give you the chance to publicly disagree with them, if it's something like that.
And we don't have to follow what they tell us to do?
No, they have no authority to enforce anything, but when you see some of the things that they'll suggest, a lot of them, you're going to say, we never thought of that.
However, if we-
It's a good objective look.
However, if we went to state minimums, it may go down to the level that they tell us?
I don't know for sure whether they, at least, you know, I'm going to draw on my experience at Riverside, whether or not they said you need to go to state minimums for teaching, um-
No, that's not that-
They, they won't tell you to do something that you can't do according to the law, you know, they won't say you could, you have to put forty kids in a classroom.
No, the kind of, question I'm kind of saying is, if, if we're forced to, because of finances, to go down to state minimums, most of the things that they'll recommend will be that state minimum area?
It could be.
Okay.
We've told them we're going to keep them informed of the adjustments that we're going to make as a district due to the budget, so they don't recommend something that we just can't do.
Okay, right, okay.
And if there's, and there's certainly probably going to be areas that we don't want to go to state minimums, and we don't have to.
Okay, all right, fiscal update?
Uh, I'll defer to my colleagues in the treasurer's office, I don't think we've got enough copies of that, so we can. Right now, it, it's, it's really tough being able to tell what the state is going to do and, and what the impact will be on us, um, what we've tried to do is to start out with where we were in terms of the district and the five-year forecast, and put on this sheet those things that we either have a reasonable idea of what the impact would be, or, um, things that, you know, are included in the budget bill right now that could change, I mean, if you recall back to two years ago, every couple weeks, the implications of the budget bill changed how much money we would get, I don't think it's going to be that drastic this time, because you have a Republican House and a Republican Senate and a Republican governor, so they may not get along completely, but they get along somewhat, um, so the changes that'll be made, I don't think will be as drastic as the others, just to give you an example, the last time the budget came out and we were getting a reduction in the first year and a big increase in the second year, by the time we got to the end, we got a reduction in both years, so I don't think it's going to be that drastic, so, so we, Mike and I sat down and tried to interpret what they're saying, and, and we did it independently, and we came up with two different answers, and we've now gotten a third set of numbers from the various organizations, budget and management and OSBA, everybody's publishing numbers, we're all in the ballpark, but the way it's written, it's like, well, what's the impact going to be, so we took our best guesses at these things, and that's what we'll go over here.
Yeah.
They did that on purpose.
That's an, that's an offer to sign, if you're looking for us on channel twenty-nine, we're not on channel twenty-one.
Yes, they moved, we are now on-
We are now on channel twenty-one.
As of-
Time Warner moved us from channel twenty-nine to twenty-one, so if you're looking for us on twenty-nine, you're in the wrong place.
I think those people watch it on YouTube and whatnot from the aid department.
Okay, okay.
Okay, let's start over again, so, we've got a three point three million dollar deficit, which is what we had in the five-year forecast, and that is after-
The next school year.
Next school year, fiscal two thousand and twelve.
The end of next school year.
End of next school year.
July of two thousand and twelve.
Okay. Yes, and that is after the requirements for set asides, now, one of the things that has come out favorable to us is that they are going to eliminate the need to have set asides, so we're hoping that the balance that we have now and the balance that we had forecasted for the end of fiscal two thousand and twelve will go away.
Can you kind of explain maybe what set aside is doing?
Uh, basically, the state determines how much money we need to spend on instructional supplies and textbooks and, and on, um, facilities maintenance and new equipment, and they pick it as a three percent of a base number related to revenues, which in our case amounts to somewhere just over five hundred thousand dollars a year, if you spend that much in the category, then everything is fine and you don't have to do anything with it, if you don't spend it, then you have to take your shortfall in spending and carry it over to the next year, and it continues to build each year that you spend less, right now, our balance is projected at five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars at the end of two thousand and twelve, that's monies that we haven't spent in that area that they deem we should have, now, I can tell you, we've put it in the budget for people to spend on textbooks, instructional equipment, instructional supplies, and they haven't been spent, so it's not like we're not budgeting it, it's just it doesn't get spent, so we have to continue to carry over, the other thing is, sometimes when you're buying textbooks, you'll have one year when you spend three hundred thousand on textbooks, because you're doing a, a whole series from kindergarten to through twelfth grade, and other times you'll spend forty or fifty thousand dollars, because all you bought is one set of something for the high school, so that's why you'll get these, these huge swings, um, but they are dropping that requirement.
Can I add one other terrifying point for anyone who, who's listening that's never heard this before, when we say that it has to be set aside in a reserve fund, it means it's sitting there, but we can't include it in our operating fund, we can't use it, we can't spend it on anything else, it just has to sit there, so we can say we have a deficit with five hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars sitting in the fund that we're not allowed to touch, so that's where people get confused, because they say, well, you're just hiding cash, you're putting it here, well, we're not hiding it there, we have to keep it there, we're not allowed to spend it, and that gets confusing.
Well, and the law, law required, this is Senate Bill thirty, and I want to, I'm glad you brought that point up, it's Senate Bill thirty that is passed, that's not being contested, it's not part of House Bill five, or Senate Bill five, this is part of Senate Bill thirty, which is not being contested, that is allowing us to use that reserve, so that's already been passed.
So it's paid, and I, I don't know if the governor signed it yet or not.
The governor hasn't?
No, he, yes, he has.
He has, okay, so, so we're, that's there, that's law now, so we don't need the set aside, so what that does is it takes our three point three million dollar deficit and takes it down to two point seven million, and that's the number that we have to try to reduce, now, I've taken a real quick look at where we stand, and every month we give you a statement and we tell you we're up, we're down, where we're moving, at the end of March, we were, I think that the number's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, looking at everything that's going on in the district, I think we're going to be in the neighborhood of, you know, a hundred to, fifty to a hundred thousand, favorable, I put the fifty in this, there's going to be some favorable, I just don't know what it is right now, so, that's in there.
That's, that's more favorable than your originally forty-four thousand carryover that we have?
Yes, yes, so, so that-
So it's like ninety-four thousand?
Yeah, so everything was, was equal to that, that'd be ninety-four thousand.
Right, correct, okay.
The next thing we did in, in order to cover some of the costs that are going to be incurred in fiscal two thousand and eleven, we transferred, or were using, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars of the jobs, federal jobs credit, the reason that's important is because we're going to use it in this fiscal year, and all of it was included in the next fiscal year, so we've got to make two thousand and twelve worse because of that. Um, our health premiums, I kind of was a little bit optimistic and only anticipated a seven percent increase, from what Mike has heard at the consortium meetings, it's going to be in the neighborhood of ten, maybe even a little higher, I took the difference between the ten and the seven, and threw the additional cost in there, which is about eighty-nine thousand dollars. The next thing, and, and this is a, a pretty firm number, based on the assumption that you see there, no replacements, and I'll let Roger and Angela talk about that one if you want, but, we have documented the, the cost for the teachers that are retiring, their salaries, their retirement, their health insurance, and the fact that they will participate in the bonus, and took that as a, as a net off of it, that factor can generate one million three hundred and two thousand dollars of savings.
Kid, I want to, a big asterisk on that one, that's if we don't replace those fifteen people.
Right.
That's only one point three million if we don't replace them.
Okay, all right.
Can you hear that? That's fifteen people, what you're-
Fifteen retirees, if we don't replace any of the fifteen, it equates to the one point three million. Now, the last item there, the million dollars of additional state funding, or however you want to look at that, if you recall, when we did the five-year forecast, we were talking ten, fifteen, twenty percent cuts in state funding, one of the things we did is we looked at it as, we're going to lose our, some of our guarantee money, and we're going to lose ten percent of that additional number, well, now that they've come out, and this is where Mike and I have come up with different numbers, but we're still in the ballpark, they've come out and said, we're going to give you additional money into the state, but we're going to take away the federal stabilization money, and we're going to take away tangible personal property reimbursement, and electric deregulation reimbursement, when we try to factor all those things together, compare it to what we had in the original five-year forecast, we're looking at being favorable by about a million dollars.
Which is incredible, because there are a lot of school districts around us that are being cut.
Oh, okay, now, we need to be clear, we didn't get a billion dollars more-
Right.
From the state of Ohio.
They're not going to cut that.
They didn't cut us as much as we thought they were, we didn't, our revenue from the state of Ohio is going down, just not as much as we thought originally anticipated.
Right, right.
Um, nowhere did we hear that the state foundation was going to go up for some districts, contrary to that, we heard ten percent, fifteen, twenty percent, and that, I think, did a good job dropping it by ten percent, so we're going up a little bit, and I think we talked about this, we're going up a little bit with state foundation, but other revenue streams that they never mentioned being on the chopping block are now being chopped, and not little dollar amounts, four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars in property tax reimbursement that should have been given to this district next year is not being given, and then some items through the joint financing district will no longer be funded, so those are items that, there's no way we could have predicted it, because it was never part of them.
We're still losing money.
Yeah, we're, we're still losing money, and the million dollars that we did in federal stabilization money, which was to stabilize the state budget, is taken away.
Oh, oh, just prolong the agony.
Yeah, it just prolonged, it did prolong the agony.
It puts you in debt.
But, you know, those are all the things, the net effect, like Mike said, is they're cutting us, it's just they're not cutting as much as we originally thought.
Yeah, the, the three point three million that you thought, you were saying that we're going to be in the hole, took in the ten percent cuts and stuff, so this is just bringing back a little bit of-
It's just bringing, bringing it back, so, basically, with all that, and, and, you know, I try to emphasize with Roger, no replacements in those retirements, you still have a nut to crack of nine hundred and two thousand dollars.
To get to zero.
To get to zero, which is what you have to have in order to present your budget.
To sign contracts.
To sign contracts, to do appropriations to the, to the county, all that stuff.
Well, and, and, believe me, if you're going to ask people, I'm happier, I am happier, but, it's a couple of things here that got emphasized, is it's fifteen less teachers, right, right out of the box.
Right.
Which means bigger classes or, or, or fewer, fewer offerings, and we're late, going to lay all that out for you in April, but, but, we still have to, we're working on the plan for that last nine or two, and then some, because when you're running a twenty-eight million dollar a year operation, you want to have more than a dollar in the bank when you're done, you'd like to have a couple hundred thousand, so we're really looking probably at another million dollars to, to get to where we're going to be in a not comfortable, but survival position, so, we've looked at a lot of pieces of this, we've looked at a lot, we've looked at every program, uh, and, and there's still probably a handful that we haven't got the data on, that we hope to present to you at your next meeting.
And on top of that, I'd like to say that's fifteen teachers with probably thirty years average experience that we're not-
Oh, absolutely.
We're going to have to make up for some, which is sometimes irreplaceable.
Testors.
I think only one of them has less than thirty years.
Yeah, fifteen, very good, fifteen, very good.
Thirty-five, um, you know, I, I, I agree, but from a financial point of view, we wanted to bring you to where we're at, and we're, let you know that we're, we're working on the other pieces, we're going to be meeting with the teachers, we're going to be meeting with OCP about- be meeting with the teachers, we're going to be meeting with OPEC about the rest of this, concurrent with doing negotiations, concurrent with everything else, and we're going to have our community financial forum, all these pieces are coming together kind of simultaneously, but keep in mind, these are numbers based on what is out there and is real today. The reality today may not be the reality two weeks from now.
And then my concern is to be, we need to, we need to have plans, and we need to have some projections, how the balance of the budget over the next three years. Not five, five, you know, we all know that that five year is way out there, but we need to, we need to be thinking, because you can't be spending more than you're taking in and expect to make it up.
And I'll say the same thing I say to you every time. Since I've been here, we have reduced, reduced, reduced. The problem is, we just can't reduce as quick as they're cutting us. And so, I'm saying, that's the problem. It's not that we're not tightening our belt, we're tightening our belt all the time, but we're not...
But we have to have a plan.
Our plan is coming forward to you, I'm sorry, but it is, to be very honest with you, Jay, and I respect your financial knowledge, I'll be happy to get us through next year because in these financial times, there's so many variables with, you know, pick one of the bills, and Senate Bill 5, whether you love it, you hate it, you like parts of it, or hate part, whatever you like about it, we're not going to know until November 8th or 11th, is it, whether that's a reality or not. So, we're not even touching that in this. We're only dealing with what we think we know, and what we think we know, in a budget bill that's in process, could change radically. So, we're building the proverbial plane as we're flying it, and the numbers are all over the place. So, right now, and that's why I want to emphasize the point right now, this is the best we can get you to where we're at. We have, we'll have the rest of the pieces to you by your next meeting, or at least to look at, but we want to get input from the teachers, we want to get input from everybody else, we want to get input, we're taking anybody's best thinking. But the problem is, as we all know, 85% of what we do is salaries and benefits. So, the other pieces, you either don't pay the light bill and have no lights, don't pay the light bill and not, the other piece is, our pieces are pretty fixed costs, and we're pretty, you know, when I, I use the example of our capital improvement all the time. When we start talking about putting $200,000 in a capital improvement, it's laughable, it's laughable, because you have one roof go bad, a section of a roof is four or $500,000. So, you know, we're squeezing everything to the bone here, and hoping we can get into the new buildings before, you know, a roof goes bad. So, we're tight all around the circle here, from supplies, everything else, and we're looking at squeezing every little thing we can, and that's what we're going to bring to you in your next meeting, hopefully give you some suggestions of what people are thinking or what we're thinking, but we're open for suggestions, we're open for suggestions from anybody. But the problem is, when you look at our budget, it's so, as every school district is, it's labor intensive. It's labor intensive, it's benefit intensive, but that's true of every school district in the country. We're in a people business, our product is delivering a service. So, you know, we were trying our darndest to maintain a good quality educational system here, that's our number one thing, as we talked about earlier, we're in a business of educating, we want to educate kids.
I was talking with Rex a little bit, and this is, here's our goal, we have the balanced budget, and we still have that of a next school district.
Well, as I told one of our elected officials, when you're talking about cutting us 20%, and what you're seeing is less than 10, but it's not yet 20, if you cut us 20%, what are you expecting us to do, put 400 kids in a gym with a teacher? Do you expect us to educate kids that way? What are you asking us? When you start throwing numbers out like 20%, it's ludicrous. And so, we're at a point where I see a light at the end of the tunnel, where I think we can make this work, I really do. It's going to involve cooperation with the teachers, it's going to involve cooperation with OPEC, the community's going to have to understand, we don't have the money, there's going to be unhappy people, there's going to be unhappy groups of people. Why would you want less than you have right now? Nobody does, nobody wants less than they have right now. But we don't have the money, and I personally, as Ward thinks otherwise, I don't think the climate is right to go out and pass a levy. I think people are hurting right now.
I went out with a gentleman tonight for dinner, and he said, "If you even think about it, you guys ought to be shy."
Well, I'm just saying, you know, if that's what you choose to do, we'll do what the board recognizes, we'll do what the board recognizes, but I'm just telling you, I think it's a tough climate right now. I think we have to get through at least another year, and we have to show that we're going to be as frugal as we can, and we're attempting to do that. But we don't, none of us, none of us, want to make any cuts. I mean, who wants to have fewer people, who wants to have a bigger, who wants to have any of that, none of us do. But, but...
Who wants to be in our seats?
Well, when you don't have the money, that's what I say in the fourth, the last executive session, you've got some tough decisions coming up, because we're going to be forced into a position that we've got to present a balanced budget, somehow we have to get there. And it's not going to be just cut out the paper clips, it's not going to work, but it's going to be people, it's going to be programs.
I do have a request to make.
Sure.
And hopefully, some people are watching this on YouTube or whatever, hopefully, you can take this media back to the teachers. I don't know about the rest of you, I have started, and I started a few weeks ago, receiving pretty consistent emails, phone calls, messages, you know, doing the, you know, I'm hearing that the district is looking at cutting the arts programs, you're going to save football, and you're going to cut all the arts, near Trenton, and how dare you not love the arts, how dare you not support the arts? Some of them aren't that, you know, save our someone are just, you know, saying, "Hey, I'm a community member, and I really support the arts, and I hope that you do too," and that kind of stuff. But I don't know what's driving, because I'm not hearing this from any other program other than All About the Arts. I don't know what's driving this campaign for Save the Arts, but I can assure you that some community members are being given a message from somewhere, that this board has been discussing and is contemplating cutting the arts, which we have not done, we've not had that conversation, and I would hope that that isn't being sparked internally by our organization, from people that are involved in those programs, I hope that it's not, and I think, you know, regardless, probably good intentions, people get passionate and emotional about things that they're attached to, and they put their heart and soul into, and I get that, but, you know, it's going to be hard enough to make the decisions we have to make without, you know, the, "All you care about is football, you don't care about drama." And I just don't even want to go there, and I just wanted to get that message out that we're not having this conversation, so whoever it is that's telling you we are, you know, you might want to go back and ask where they're getting their information, and again, please come to meetings so that you guys are informed.
Okay, one of the things, and again, I'm just, you know, I want to be open and honest, is one of the retirees is in the arts, just one, I believe just one, just one. So, if we're sitting here and we haven't acted on anything yet, so I'm just saying, we haven't, but if we're saying that we're not going to replace any of those 15, technically, we're reducing that by one, but we're also reducing a lot of other areas by one too, so it's not just the arts.
But it doesn't, and, well, correct me if I'm wrong, but does that mean that that entire program will just go away?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Or they'll just have one less advisor?
No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean that, you're going to have one less person.
There's a big difference between having one less advisor there and the entire musical program.
No, the entire musical program would not go away.
The things that I'm getting are, we're shutting the arts down, we don't, you know, we're skating sports, and we're canning arts, and I don't know where that's coming from.
No, that is not, that is even discussed, that is not even discussed, but I just wanted to clarify, I didn't want people to think I'm misleading them, because there is one person on the retirees list, if we are saying we're not replacing that, well, that's one less person. Okay, all right.
The only thing I'd like to say is that, from the fiscal side, I understand our situation, but from the educational side, and from my background, there's a lot of things that I like about Madison schools, and I love about Madison too, like the things that we have that are so unique, from Project Lead the Way, and to other things that, you know, that we, you know, that are just educationally sound. All-day kindergarten, language in the elementary, I mean, there's a million other things, I'm just saying these as examples, that we like to have, and, you know, it always concerns me that, you know, we want to have the best educational system out there possible, but yet, we still have to watch our fiscal dollars, and it just makes it so tough, and it's really, I don't know, it just upsets me a little bit that we can't do every little thing we can for it, but we are trying to do our best with dollars we have.
Given the circumstances, I think we're all trying our best. So, if anybody has any solutions, you know, come forward.
Oh, I just wanted to make one comment too, and I have heard, I've had people question, you know, what are you looking to cut, and things like that, and I just think that, you know, if anybody out there has a concern, then they, you know, should come forward and start voicing your opinions now, because, you know, if you wait, and you don't voice your opinion, then, you know, you really don't have any time to, once those discussions start, and once we've made those decisions, you don't have that time to come forward and voice your opinion and let us know what you're thinking, so.
And the public meetings are going to be really important too, for the feedback of other, because we're going to have lots of parents coming and telling us, and teachers, because they have jobs, and, you know, that type of thing, but, you know, the public ones that, where the taxpayers are invited to come there as well, Madison's going to have to, as does Ohio, and the whole community, all of our schools are all going through the same thing, how much services do we want, and how much are we willing to pay for? And there's not going to be any magic rabbits being pulled out of the hat, I've used this before, there's, I don't hear the cavalry coming, you know, but, you know, we all know that the state of Ohio's a eight billionaire in the hole, so, so it's, none of us want to do this, none of us, but guess what, we're required to balance our budget.
Mr. President, it's your job. And one of the things you said, Jay, I think it's important for people to know, we're not the lone soldier here. I, you look at the paper, look at Cleveland, cut 690 teachers, and it's, we are not out there by ourselves in this one, it's a function of the economy for the whole state of Ohio, and we're all in the same thing, so, you know, it's difficult times.
Well, that's just later, sort of wrestling with, do we empty out the prisons, just so that we can keep enough money in the schools? You know, that's what they're wrestling with, you know, and we, you know, do we not have any police to show up, but fires, you know, fires should show up?
Sure.
They're wrestling with tough stuff too, so, I mean, it's, you know, it's...
Mr. President, what is next on the agenda?
Well, I was going to say, before we leave board discussion, if any board member had anything else that's not on here, we'd like to bring up.
Yeah, good.
Okay, I just want to make sure we covered all the... All right, so, we're moving to item seven, recognition of the superintendent, Dr. Yadi.
Okay, first, the board's approving following substitute teachers, beginning with Christine LaMarca, and ending with Kristen Zimmerman, and also like to approve George, and I'm not going to even try to pronounce it.
Karinopolis.
Karinopolis, thank you, as the head soccer coach that the REIT listed, and also to rescind Congress previously approved for Eric Terousse and Matt Page, and to accept the retirement resignation of two, four, six, seven, five teachers, beginning with Stu Baffert, and ending with Kristina McHugh, and...
Oh, no, you have to have the...
We've got to vote, stop it, there's a vote. Stop at the track coach.
Yeah, okay.
So, we have a motion on the track coach and the substitute teachers.
Why are we rescinding?
Well, first, they have to have a motion.
Second.
Any other questions, discussion, Mrs. Ward?
Why are we rescinding the question? That one was because we already hired them once, so you can't hire them twice.
Oh, okay.
So, they still are track coaches?
Yes, they're still there.
Both of them?
Yes.
Okay, so, we're down to the, we're not doing the resolutions in this motion?
No.
We're doing all of them?
Just doing the substitute teachers and the soccer coach and the track coach. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Zabo?
And the resignations.
Yeah.
That vote should be moved under that.
Oh, the resignations were supposed to be, okay.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, the vote goes...
Susan's getting used to doing these agendas.
That's okay.
Okay, Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Teresa Ward?
Oh, yes.
Jack Manasco?
Yes.
Jay Fabian?
Yes.
Rex Reiger?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0.
Okay, now, do we...
You don't have a spot in here, that's part of the problem.
Was part of that?
The next motion should actually start with the resignation.
The next one should start with your resolution.
I will move for the resolution.
Okay.
But just make clear on your agenda that there's a spot there, that the resignation should be above the vote, does anyone see that? Of the seven teachers, that should be above the voting block. Anyone got that? Okay, we have a motion and a second for the resolution, Dr. Yadi? You want to finish that, or anything else you want to say?
Not really, unless there's any questions, that's just basically the resolution, authorized and advertised for bids.
That's part of the bidding crack presentation we have.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Mr. Zabo?
Jay Fabian?
Yes.
Rex Reiger?
Yes.
Teresa Ward?
Yes.
Jack Manasco?
Yes.
Michelle Hayes?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0.
Okay, next item, Mr. President, is, we took on a huge monumental task here, and you are sharing this task with us. We've been emailing to you to try to save trees.
I know you have.
And, and, we're through, we're through three full sections, and we actually are almost through a fourth reading tomorrow, I think, on the 4, around the 5,000, and we've hoped to have the 5,000, which is the student section, which is probably one of the biggest sections in that thing. So, we're kind of on target to get you to an entirely new board policy by the start of the new school year. Tonight is just for the first of two readings. At the next board meeting, as we talked about, you would actually act on these. Tonight is for, if there's any questions, you were going to email me, and I know Jack lent emailed me one question related to the student board member, yeah, student board member, and I believe we included in here our current language that we can certainly insert in here if this board so desires.
My only point was, it's in there, we chose that to fill the position this year of being a new board, and some dynamics, that sort of things, wanted to get us, to give us some time to get to know each other and working together a little bit better before we brought a student in the mix. But, you know, I would like that program to remain on the books, so if somebody wants to pick it up, or if I want to pick it up, you know, next year, we can, we can do that. It is a good program, it's something that's important to me personally, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it.
And that's why we inserted the former language in here, so you'll probably look at it. Everybody's fine with it, we can just keep...
I'm fine with it personally.
Fine, then we'll just reinsert that for your next reading, and you can prove it with that inserted, we'll make sure that's inserted in there.
And I didn't email my questions, because I just got my questions today.
I brought a hard copy, you have to bear with me, because...
That's okay, I was going to, if I keep, I, well, you can go for now, or I can email them, if that's fine too, I can still email them.
What is your pleasure? I mean, you tell me, because it's something that, like that thing, as long as all five board members are okay, we'll just make the change, but if you want to ask them now, I mean, how many policies are there?
Oh, just three.
Okay, let's just do them.
All right.
Just give me a number, and I'll...
Um, 6320, page 8 of 8.
63...
Well, actually, page 8 of 8 on my, on my PDF file, so I don't know if it's...
As long as we know the number, Michelle, that's all right, as long as... 63... Okay, 6320, and your question is...
It's talking about purchases of services as well, and I read this a couple times. I'm trying to determine whether or not this is giving authorization to purchase services without board authorization, is that what this is doing?
On page 8 of 8, okay, we're...
Well, to see 8 of 8 is what I have in my PDF file, so...
Okay, and that, okay, requirements, is that what you're talking about?
Oh, 6320, it's under finances and purchase, then it's purchases.
Okay. These, first state, blanket, limitations...
Yeah, and I had a question about that blanket blanket thing too.
Okay, and I'll defer to adder Mike on that, because that's...
The answer to your first question is no, I'm not sure where in the policy you're getting that question from, but as we went through the finance ones, we tried to write them as close to its current policies as possible.
Okay.
It does not give authority to the treasurer, or to the superintendent, any different authority than what we're going to have.
Yeah, the only authority we currently have, and that we would have under that, that I understand, and this is his area, so I'm not going to, would be the authority given to us by the budget that the board approves, so, anything outside the budget, we wouldn't have any authority.
Yeah, that was going to be my answer, is, basically, most of these things are under... are, are under the budget, and we go through that...
Correct, and when you approve the budget, you approve...
As long as you can stay within that budget, you can purchase...
Correct, we go outside the budget, then, then we don't have the authority. And, and I think in the blanket blanket, I'm going to let them explain, because I don't kind of understand the blanket blanket.
Blanket purchase orders are, are purchase orders for either specific vendors. We're going to buy fuel hogged lawn from Melzer's, so we issue a blanket purchase order, so they don't have to every time they want a purchase order, or a fuel purchase, have to wait for the whole process that takes place before a purchase order is issued and delivered coming. Another type of blanket purchase order is for mileage reimbursements. You, you know, your teachers are going to travel to conferences, some may travel in between buildings, but at the beginning of the year, you don't know exactly which teacher. So you say mileage reimbursements for this line item aren't going to exceed this amount based on this purchase order. And what it allows you to do is, if you have 50 teachers traveling, you don't have to do 50 individual purchase orders, they're all covered under the blanket purchase order.
What's the super blanket?
They both have to deal with, and, and, they both have to deal with line items within the budget. They seem a lot alike, I'm trying to keep up the difference.
Well, the best... Professional services and fuel, fuel oil, food, food items.
The best example of a super blanket is like a blanket for healthcare. It's a blanket purchase order for $3 million that's going to cover our monthly payments to, to healthcare, because we're part of the consortium. You know, those are things that you, you know you're going to spend, they're obligations that you have, just like we'll do a blanket purchase order with the Ohio Schools Council for natural gas purchases that may be like $300,000. But we know every month we're going to get an invoice for X number of dollars that's going to make up that 300 and some over the end of the year. So that's basically what that is. And I think, and I correct me if I'm wrong, I'll put my business manager hat back on, I, I think about, right, five years ago, they went from just strictly blankets to super blankets, because they, at the time, at least, blankets were, had self-expired at the end of three months.
Right.
And people were renewing the things every three months, and it would be, so for every blank purchase order, you really get four a year, so it wasn't served. So they, they said something to the effect, and this is their area. No, you're right. They said something to the effect of, up to a certain amount of dollars, yeah, you can still do blankets, but for healthcare or whatever, you could do a super blanket that goes a whole year, because you know you're going to pay your healthcare for the whole year. So I think that's the distinction.
Right, and a super blanket can cover more than one line item appropriation, or healthcare covers many line items, based on the people that are covered.
Does that answer your questions?
It does. Well, no, that answers...
I mean, no, no, it did... On that, on that, on that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's see, twelve twenty, administrator, twelve twenty, I'm not sure, I don't remember what my...
That's it, twelve twenty?
I don't remember what my question was on that...
You're looking to, you're looking to avoid superintendent?
Uh, no.
Whoops.
Or the good wood.
Or the good wood.
Is that a, is that a party?
Well, no, actually, I'm going to have to, no, 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 no. No, but I will email you that one, because I don't remember what exactly my question was there, so I will email you that one.
That's right. Okay, are there any other questions?
No, that's it, because the, two of them had to do with that one.
Okay, so, 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 again, as we talk about this process, in order, what we'll do then, we'll move all of these to your next meeting for approval, but they won't become effective until the start of next school year. You'll approve them as written, and then, then they can go to the print, they can start putting them on a website, but we won't make them accessible on a website until the start of next year, when they're all done.
I, I...
Sure.
That's right. Under our present policy, and I'm not sure if we do, I know that the, the state allowed it, and that's for training compensation for the board members. Right now, we get board member meeting dollars, and then also, this year or two, they allow training dollars for, when you go to, go to training.
Okay, okay.
And that has been, that has been crossed out, crossed out, struck out. And that's, that's zero, zero one four six.
Zero one four six, okay.
And zero one four seven, was the, that's where the option, you have an option three A, and option three...
Oops, let me get there. Let me get there.
We don't get paid for that right now, though.
Well, it's allowed. And then, my question is, do we, do we get it or not?
Well, I, I think...
And if, if, if we don't, then why not?
Well, I think what we tried to do, and anybody here, correct me if I'm wrong, we tried to match what our current policy said.
Right.
So I think we showed, I, I think currently, in my, uh, we look at current policy, and currently, that's, we don't pay for that, do we? We have a policy book on it.
Uncle Look.
Are you looking for the policy that deals with board members going to conferences?
Mm-hmm.
If you look at zero one seven, five point one?
Zero one seven?
Yeah, I think it just may be in a different location.
Oh, okay. Well, we don't have that yet.
Yeah, zero one seven?
Zero one seven, five point one.
They don't have it. They don't have it.
And what does it say?
Is it zero one?
For board conferences, conventions, and workshops.
Are you under, under...
Oh, one seven.
Oh, one seven?
Zero one seven five, one seventy-five point one.
I don't have that. We don't have it yet. I don't have that.
Yeah, I think, I think they took that out.
I have zero one seven O is the highest one I have.
That's what she put.
I personally don't have a problem not being paid to do voluntary, um, training.
Yours cuts off.
Mine cuts off at zero one...
Zero one seven...
Mine cuts off at zero one seven O. Under, is it under duties?
How many pages do we have of zero, please?
Uh...
No, there's zero one seven zero.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Four of four.
Zero one seven five...
Look at page three of four.
Three of four. Five one, point one, zero...
The school board conference convention workshop, three of four.
Yeah.
And zero one seven O. He says zero one seven five.
Okay, was your reading...
The training.
Oh, I see, I see, I see, now we're on the same page. It's policy zero one seven O, but it's, it's part of the...
So it's, it's crossed out in two different places.
But it says, but it, this allows attendance at state conferences, is what it says.
But, but we don't get paid to go there.
Well, the board recognizes value of membership, attendance at conferences at local, county, state, national level. Attendance at local, state workshop and conferences is encouraged. Chief board member is expected to report back to the board, attending the conference at the district expense. So it does say that, at the district expense.
Okay.
What he's saying is, he wants us to know if we get paid above the minimum.
Below that, yeah, below that, it says, the president of the board who recommends reported attendance at conferences, then there's, it's crossed out, board members shall be paid for attendance and...
And I gotta believe we crossed that out, because in our current policy, like, I can't imagine...
We don't have it in our current policy. I know that other, I know that when I go to conferences, other board members from other districts do get paid for that.
I think it's 125 bucks or something.
It's 125 dollars a day, same as what you do for your meeting.
Okay.
I personally, I'm fine with, with not, I mean, I myself am fine with not having that, but...
It's your policy.
Because, well, I mean, we're, we're already, I mean, we, you know, we're making cuts every place else, I don't think, you know, I don't feel comfortable with adding more to me, so...
The, 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 the point is, it's, number one, it's allowable, okay?
It is allowable.
And, and therefore, we can not take it, and we can decide not to take it, or we can donate it back, or whatever, but it is still one of those things that is allowable under the, under the ORC, yeah, that you do get it, so...
So it's being consistent with the ORC, but if you don't want the money, you can just say...
You can donate it back, you can not...
Right, so we can just say...
At the time, we can say, no, thank you, you know, I'm going to this conference for, you know, I don't, I don't need to be paid.
Now, that actually, in the past, excuse me, we never paid that unless we were asked to be...
Mm-hmm.
And I can't remember the last time I was asked.
I don't, yeah, I don't know that we... But, but, what is current board policy saying?
There, it, you know, because the numbers just...
Oh, yeah, yeah. I think, I think it's...
It didn't...
Okay, well, just give us some guidance, what do you, what do you want us to do? You want, it's your policy, Gary, you tell us what you want to do. You want that, no?
I, I think, I think that we should...
If you were left in a...
Oh, I'm, no, I'm just saying, just tell me what you want to do.
We, we volunteer lots of our time and effort all along, and if you're going to do, if you're going to take a day off of work to, to go down to a seminar or conference or whatever, you know, then that's, I think that's, you know, should be allowable.
Could be allowable, but if you don't want the money, then you can just say you don't want it.
Yeah, right. Your call.
I would be fine with that, can we put a cap on it, so that, I mean, and I'm, I'm not saying any of these board members would, because we didn't even take money when we do do it, and we do do it frequently, we don't take any much for it, but you could potentially have someone that got on this board, you can go to trainings six days a week if you wanted to, there's always something going on, you could lose your job and decide you're going to go to a workshop five days a week, and, like, from the school, I just think there should be some sort of...
What is current? I think it's policy.
There was a point in my life that my only salary that I was getting was my school board salary, and that was $40 officially called a meeting back then.
And it does say, members of Madison Local Board of Education will receive the full amount of compensation for attending meetings and board approved training programs when that compensation is permitted by law.
Oh, so, then we were wrong, we struck it, we shouldn't have struck it.
Right.
So, then, I, we were...
No, that's, uh...
We went through, these things start blurring after a while.
Well, sure.
Relating all this training.
All right, so, so we will, we will unstrike that.
And outside your plate.
No, we will, we will unstrike it.
Okay.
Thank you, Angela.
We have one more.
You know, I do have a question, and we may just not have gotten to it yet, but, because we get, you know, certainly reimbursed for, you know, mileage and meals and things, but I, we need, I think maybe we should have a cap on what that reimbursement, you know, per day for meals and things.
There is...
Well, there is, what is policy? It's so much for breakfast, so much for lunch, and so much for dinner, and I'm almost sure that's in the new policy.
I thought it was...
Is that policy or procedure?
For breakfast lunch.
If it's not in the new policy, it'll be part of the administrative guidelines.
Oh, that could be, yeah.
And administrative guidelines will match with this current policy. It's just a matter of what the new system, where things are going to finally show up.
For, for, for the general public that doesn't know what we're talking about here, we're switching from a policy system that was developed by Ohio School Boards Association to a policy system that is developed by NEOLAs, whatever NEOLA stands for. NEOLA is a numeric system that goes zero thousands to 10,000, to 9,000, and numbering system... I've got a bunch of... And the, the, the old policy, which is the thick book that Angela has over there, under Ohio Schools Boards, is by letters. This is far easier to find and sort. And one of the major reasons we're going to this is we're, we're trying to comply with all current laws and legislation, and we want to have this on our website, where you can click on the website starting next school year, and say, dress, school dress code, and it'll be able to take you to the policy, and eventually to an administrative guideline that govern, governs that, any policy or guideline that governs that, and so it will be all access on our website, website to everyone. So that's, we're going through, we're taking, this is a monumental task, because we're taking every single board policy, and tonight, we're just dealing with this many, we're, we're taking every single board policy, taking it from one system to the other system, and trying to be consistent and comply with the law. Is that a nutshell?
Mm-hmm. Another, another one that I, I was wondering why we struck it.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, it's zero one four six.
Zero one four six.
One four six. Okay, that's resignations or removals of a board member.
Okay.
And, uh, under, it says, removal of the member who resigns shall become effective upon the presentation of the resignation to the board duly convened, or, and then what's crossed out is, or, upon the effective date of specific, specified in the resignation, whichever is later. I was wondering why that was struck. For example, say somebody was planning on moving out of, out of town.
Okay.
Okay, and if they present their resignation to the board on January 8th, but they're going to move out of town on, uh, May 35th, or 31st, excuse me. I was going to say May 5th, but it's May, May 31st, okay? And so you're, you're making it effective at the end of May, but you're, you're, you're putting it in on January 8th, just to let everybody know that you're going to be resigning, you're not moving, you're going to be out of the community. So this, if I'm reading this correctly, it says, whenever that was presented to the board and convened, but...
The later of the two, right.
That's crossed out.
Oh.
That's the point, that's crossed out. It says, or upon the effective date specified in the resignation, whichever is later. So if we specify it's going to be May 31st, this says, whenever you turn it in, the next convened meeting, you're done.
There's no way to give that that out.
I see. Good point. We can unstrike it.
That was a good one, Jay.
Okay. Good point.
See, it does, I'm not...
All right. All right. Do, are you, you have that in? Yeah, I have, yeah, I have the, on, again, later here, conflict of interest, zero one four one point two.
Zero one four one point two.
Can I move a little closer, if I can?
Yeah. Let's see if I can... Zero four, zero...
Yeah, who was one?
One four...
Zero one four point two.
Zero one four one point two.
Right. It's under zero one four O, then he goes to zero one.
Can I come over here and read your...
And again, we didn't make physical copies, 'cause we didn't wanna...
No, it's not.
The concern that I have is that we have conflict of interest, we have, we have somebody that belongs to the union.
Well, technically, since they lost that, I would say she's not really a union member.
She still belongs to the union.
Time to move on.
Well, I'm not, I'm not so concerned about her, I'm concerned about anybody else. I mean, we're talking about policy for the whole district, that's definitely...
Okay, zero one four point two, I have, is conflict of...
What, what is, what, is or isn't should be, or what?
What's your problem?
What do you want to say?
Yeah, what is it?
My problem is, I don't see, I don't see where, if we have a conflict of interest, and in my opinion, a conflict of interest is, is a union member, maybe it's not. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, I, if, if that's what you're saying, I think, I think, I'd rather ask a lawyer, but I think ID covers what I think you're saying, a board member from having directly or indirectly any pecuniary interest in any contract with the board. I would think, and I, don't ask me to define pecuniary.
But at this point, like in her case, in this point, she's not, she's not hired by the, the school, but she still belongs to that union.
But speaking in general terms, speaking in general terms, I'm not gonna speak about what the board, I'm speaking in gen, no, I'm just telling you, I'm, you can speak however you want, I'm gonna speak in general terms. If a board member was a member of a union, I would think, by that statement, they would not be allowed to vote on that particular issue and that particular contract only. That's the only thing I think that would cover. I don't think it covers anything else. I, but I'm not a lawyer.
Well, no, no, I'm just, I'm just, you know, we're talking about our policy here, I don't want to make sure that we're all comfortable with what we're doing.
Why don't we take that question and give it to our lawyer, and he'll make his decision on that.
Sure you did, you sent me a certified letter, and there's no...
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that's it. Well, I mean, I think he's not talking about you specifically, I mean...
No, this is not new, I mean, this...
You just want a general break.
Or, or this is, this is what they, what we have here, this is what their boilerplate is already. They've, they have tried to...
Take ours and...
Take ours and mesh it in there.
We've tried.
This is not our language presently.
We've tried, believe me, countless hours.
Oh, yeah.
Gal, we, we have tried, we have a quite voluminous board policy right now.
Do you have any more, Jake? He's got one more.
Which Xed is, it's sent to the superintendent. Our, if, if somebody resigned, in this particular, if somebody resigned, if somebody wants to become a board member, they send their, their qualifications into, and it says presently to the superintendent, or we could, or we could X the box that says, uh, the board will interview all candidates, and that's not Xed.
All candidates for what?
Uh, if a, if a, listen, he's talking specifically now about a board vacancy, if one person leaves the board, the applicants would come to the superintendent, and then there's a choice, does the superintendent give the applicants to the board, and the board says, we wanna interview, there's twenty candidates, we don't interview five of them, or should the policy check the box saying, we, the board will interview all candidates?
Yeah, well, if it's, um, a case of a board member vacating and leaving a board seat open, I, I kinda think that, 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 uh, the potential candidates to fill that board should not go through the superintendent, because it should go directly to the board.
Well, I think it's just a clearinghouse, I think it's...
I think that's where it's being sent to.
They're sent to the board president.
He just brings the risk.
Then I would bring it to you guys, and you say, we wanna interview, there's fifty, not, pick a number, three or fifty, there's this many people, who do you wanna interview? We'll set up the interviews for you.
My initial, yeah, my initial...
It's a, it's a, it's an address to send them to.
That's, that's right.
And, so...
Normally, I, I would thought it would, would be sent to the president of the board, or it could be the president of the board that stepped down.
And the vice president.
Yeah, correct. And that's, and that has happened. So you'd be sending somebody that's left, or, and so the, 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 the common policy amongst most districts is to send them to the superintendent, superintendent gives them to the remaining board members, and then you do what you want with them. Superintendent has no power other than receiving them.
And what's been Xed out also is, Xed out is that the board shall interview all interested candidates, well, we could have a hundred, five hundred people show up, you know, that wanna be a board member, or, but we don't want that interview, that's what I'm saying. I'm agreeing, you know, with that.
Yeah, well, so, so that's why I think, I think we're, we're consistent.
We're okay.
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
More?
Good?
You know?
Okay.
Well, just through those.
Well, we got, we got, you have more coming, folks.
Yep.
And we have more meetings, so we have more...
All right.
So we're gonna...
We're gonna, these, these, with the adjustments that you asked to make, they will be on your April nineteenth meeting for your approval effective the start of next school year.
No, if, if we truly, and I, unfortunately, I've not been through all of them.
That's all right, that's all right.
And we'll probably all be in that mode at some point, and if we find a particular thing we're not happy with, and we need to bring it back, we can always pull that off of the...
Absolutely, pull that number off.
That number off.
But here's, here's the one thing I'm gonna caution you, if any one of you call me, I'm not gonna change it, because this is the board policy, and so, so if you call me and say, I'll, I'll pull it from the, from the approval thing, we can discuss it that night, and if you don't like the, an adoption to it, that's fine, but, but we'll move the rest of the stuff. Okay, all right. What I'm saying, I'm not gonna make a change based on one person.
Yeah, okay.
All right, all right. All right, all right. So, uh, as far as I'm concerned, as of today, five to nine, on whatever day of the week it is, Thursday, we're gonna move all of these on for approval at the next board meeting. Okay, all right.
Okay, do we have any more public participations?
All right, okay. Krista, born in Greenwich Drive, New Ohio, teacher at Madison. I just have one question, there were talks going around about cuts with staff, and saying, I didn't realize that there might even be happening, is there any date that you can give us, that we can prepare our staff? I know other districts in the area have already received RIF letters, and just so the ones that possibly could be let, let go...
Sure.
And find some other employment, if at all possible.
Well, as you know, Chris, and by our contract, we're gonna sit down with your leadership, and we've already kinda, we kinda had a date, and then we found out that, uh, your people were, that was a negotiation, saying we're gonna use that, can't meet on Wednesdays. So we're, I, I talked with Todd Jake and your president, Kim Jessup, and we're gonna try to find a date where we can do that and have those discussions.
Okay.
As soon as we do that, we're, we're trying to get all these steps in there, and part of the difficulty we're having is spring break, teachers aren't gonna wanna come and talk about that stuff on spring break, so we're trying to squeeze all this in prior to spring break, so we can get back to the board, we can get the community, we're trying to do all these things kind of on a parallel path.
Or, or he says we have to do it by a certain date.
No, actually, no, 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 that's not true. Okay, for financial reasons, there is no date.
No, it's just, it's just more...
It's coming courtesy of what we're...
Yeah, and we're trying, and we're trying.
And we've talked about that, Chris, that's...
We're trying, so are we waiting, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, are we waiting for the contract negotiations to...
No, 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 we're, we're doing, we're, no, this is just a meeting with, what do they call that group?
That group committee.
RIF committee, meeting with your RIF committee, and then, after meeting with your RIF committee, we will meet with the board and discuss kind of what came out of that, and...
Okay.
Okay, no, we are gonna meet with them, and we, believe me, we wanna move this along too. We're not trying to put any teacher in a situation where if we do have to RIF, or we have to reduce, that they can't go out and at least look, 'cause it's gonna be tough enough out there with all the people out there.
Okay. I wanna say, Chris and Tonya, it's really refreshing to, to these guys here, I mean, I think the board appreciates your presence and your time for me. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah.
May I ask a clarify question also, I'm sorry, I'm just...
No, I think it's good.
So, I, I want to show, I understand the correct, are we talking about like the, with the RIF, the meeting with the RIF committee? Um, maybe I misunderstand the RIF committee exactly, it is, it is, I thought that was to be more about the specifics of what exact position that would affect, is that correct?
It, it will, it will, we will lay out what if we do go down this path of not replacing the fifteen retirees, and if all of these numbers alter, and we have a nine hundred and two thousand dollar deficit, that coupled with classified staff, coupled with programmatic shifts and changes, coupled with, um, fees added to activities, and a variety of other things, will be discussed. We can give you, can't give you a random, but we have an idea of where some dollars are coming from, but we don't wanna cut any more people, we have to, so we're squeezing every turnip before we get to that point, and that's part of the problem. The easy thing right now would be to say, we need nine hundred and two thousand dollars, let's, let's figure out how many teachers that takes to RIF. That's what we're not, we don't wanna do. We're trying to figure out a way that we can save teachers, save as much as we can. And so, as you know, last year, we didn't lay off, we didn't RIF any, we didn't RIF any, because we were able to work things out with you guys, didn't RIF anybody. So we're, we're kinda going down a similar path. It's a little harder doing that, takes a little more time doing that, but it saves jobs, and, and it keeps the class sizes down, keeps programs and everything else.
Okay, so I guess my question is, and you've probably already answered it, I may have just missing a part of that, but like, 'cause I imagine it's, it's mostly a decision of you guys here about what specific areas are going to be cut, if, if may necessary, right? I mean, the RIF committee's not gonna have much feedback on that, they're gonna make sure...
Well, yes, a lot of it, as you well know, Tonya, is gonna be dependent upon certification, areas of certification, and so that, that, with, with the different levels of certification we have now, and, and the training people have, and updatedness of their certification through LPTC, uh, is gonna drive a lot of decisions, but it's, we're gonna still have a little flexibility, a little bit of flexibility, but a lot of it's gonna be driven, driven by, you know, currently, we're following seniority, currently, we're following our contract, and we could plan on continue that, and we have to follow the licensure laws.
Right, 'cause I, it is my understanding that the RIF committee is gonna kinda help to make sure that the proper, uh, opening of the season would take...
Have you thought about this, have you thought about this?
And, and, and they will, but let me give you a hypothetical. If we're gonna, if we had to, to get to that number, let's say, and this is all hypothetical, if it was ten teachers, and that would solve the problem, well, we could, that's a very cut and dry thing, but we gotta factor in all the other things, reductions that we potentially could make, 'cause it may not need to be ten teachers, may only need to be four, or three, or two, or hopefully none. And so, right now, we can give you a bunch of different scenarios, but it all depends on how these other things play out, that we're kind of a work in progress right now. We're looking at classified, we're looking at, uh, supply accounts, we're looking at different programmatic things, and all those things are gonna impact that nine oh two number you saw tonight.
Right. So is there a general, and again, I apologize if you're...
No, no.
Is there a general timeline you guys think you might release then, about, not necessarily specific cuts you absolutely will be making, but even potential cuts to certain departments?
I hope, I hope by the end of this month.
By the end of this month?
I hope, yeah, by my, I, I, at the absolute latest, at the absolute latest, but again, it's gonna be squeezing into meetings with your people, OPE, everybody else, and, and we should, and, and, and the board, and the board. We already got you scheduled, we got you scheduled on the nineteenth. Our schedule fell apart on this, so we need to, we're, we're working on getting a new date.
Okay, 'cause as Chris said, I know a lot of people are asking about whether they should just, their best interests, start applying elsewhere.
I get it, we're ready to call.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, me. Um, what did you say, we were having the, I need to write it in, the public forum?
Uh...
Twenty seven. Twenty seven.
Thank you, thank you.
And where will that be?
High school.
High school. May, please?
April twenty seventh.
Correct.